It is now 6:25 PM. We will reconvene our regular meeting. Dr. Head, do you have any introductions? Special guests to recognition?
Yes, I would like to... We have several students from some of our classes for Texas and U.S. government classes. If you're one of our students and you're here observing, would you just hold up your hand? So... Are you... What are you observing? The board? Are you just seeing how the board meeting operates? Is that what you're...
Yeah, why don't... Why don't a couple of you come up to the podium and tell us what the class is? And we're going to find out who the real leader is. The young lady in the back that's smiling, come on up, please.
Don't be shy.
They're all smiling.
You don't have a seat anyway.
Yeah. Come on, don't be shy. Yeah, alright. If you would, yes, stand right there. Tell us who you are, what the class is, and what the expectations are, you know, from this session.
So today we came to observe...
Let them turn the mic on first.
I think it's on. Sorry.
Oh, okay, yeah, speak, speak.
My voice is squeaky. Okay. So today we came to observe. We're in Government 2306 with Doc... John, Dr... I think he's... Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, chose the wrong person, but okay, I'll try.
No, I think you're doing quite well. Just go ahead.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, so yes, we came to observe and to know about the community, and he wants us to... He actually gave us some questions. I can probably read them to you.
What the questions to us are? Questions you have to find answers to?
No, it's right here, I have it.
Okay.
He just said he wants us to write a 500-word essay, and he wants us to say the date, time, and place of the meeting. He wants us to describe who was there, what issue were discussed, and how were citizens involved in the meeting.
Awesome.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. And if you would, though, do us a favor. After you turn in the paper or a couple of you, come back and tell us what kind of grade you made.
Okay. I'll probably make an A.
Oh, I know you will, alright. Thank you so much. I'm proud of you. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Head.
You all do know this is online, so if you missed something, you can go back later and look at it. Or if you leave early. Okay, the second person is... We're glad to have you, by the way. That's why we're here, is to help you. So, the second person is Divethia. Is that the way you pronounce it? Gelleri?
Divethia.
Divethia, okay. So she is the candidate for, the only candidate, for LSC Faculty Senate. So, right, you want to, like, hold up your hand so they know who you are? Okay. So if she's the only candidate, she's going to be the Faculty Senate President over at North Harris, right?
Excellent. Glad to have you, Mr. Gelleri.
Hopefully the vote will go your way. And we have, let's see, I've got one other... I've got a couple of them, but... So we have the reporter, Zach Ezon. Where is Zach? Right there, from Community Impact. Glad to have you. And, in Community Impact, if you've not looked at the latest of Community Impact, they do a great job with Lone Star, so thank you. And we, if you've not... Helen, can we get a copy of that at the next... For the next... If not, I have one at my house, by the way. So, the next person is Mario. If you would introduce Sandra Martinez to talk about LSC Voices.
So, I'd like to introduce Sandra Martinez. So Sandra is our HR Communications Manager, and so she's done a great job of being the editor-in-chief of a magazine that you should have in front of you. It's inaugural edition called Voices, and so she did all the work, so here she is.
John, can you turn that... Can you turn the volume up a little bit?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Head. It's my pleasure and honor to present you with the inaugural edition of LSC Voices. This is a diversity publication, and the idea came to life from our ABC of HR and CHRO, Mr. Mark Yorin. And its purpose is to promote and celebrate the diversity of Lone Star, to celebrate the passions of our employees and their stories, really celebrate them as people, not necessarily just our roles within Lone Star, but really celebrating them, what stories they have and their backgrounds. And putting that together was really... It was very exciting for me, and so we're really looking forward to the next issue. In doing all of the interviews, it was really well-received, and even members of the Chancellor's Cabinet have been willing to help and really get involved, so it's very exciting for me.
That's a really good... Board members, that's a really good piece of work, if you haven't had time to take a look at it. And I know it was just put on your... In front of you, but it's really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the... This is the first edition. How often will this be published?
Twice a year. So the next issue will be in September.
Now what's the distribution of it?
We did 1,000 copies this first round, and it's internal. It's mainly internal, but I... It really is something that can be used as... Ooh, I'm sorry. As a community-building tool within Lone Star, but also externally. Within the stories, it's sort of exciting to see because the... Every employee that we interviewed, it's interwoven into their story of what they do for Lone Star. So it's really a different angle of explaining, like, the services that we have. For example, at Tom Ball, Dr. Anne Jeanette, the Director of Life Path, and so she was able to tell us her story, but then also what she does within Lone Star, so...
Well, I want to commend you and your team on a job well done. I had a chance to read through it.
Thank you.
It was quite interesting and very, very professional.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Helen, do you want to introduce the sabbatical recipient? While Helen is working her way up, if you... I wanted to make sure the board knows that John Golden is back, working with us again. Jack... Uh, Jack, uh... He was out... John was out for two months, and he's going to take better care of himself from here on out, so glad to have you back.
Mr. Chair, Trustees, Chancellor, I'm sitting in for Katie Caruso, our Associate Vice Chancellor for International and Honors Programs tonight. She is the Chair of the Sabbatical Committee, but she has a conference out of town, and so asked if I could do this for her. And it's my great pleasure to introduce the 2018-19 Sabbatical recipients. Employees, faculty, and administrators are eligible to apply for a sabbatical every seven years. It gives them a semester off with full pay to research, take care... Basically, to do what they do academically, but away from teaching, away from their committee work, away from the college. They renew, they refresh, and then they bring back what they've learned to move us forward. And it folds into three of our five priorities: student success, academic and workforce program quality, and culture. And so tonight, I'm going to ask the recipients to come forward as your names are called and stand up here with me until all of you are called forward. First, Dominic Begon. He's Professor of Political Science at Montgomery, and he is looking at the effects of Hurricane Harvey and lessons that we can learn. David Birch, former Faculty Senate President at LSC Tom Ball, whom many of you know, Professor of Political Science, and wants to... I have an MPA, and I didn't understand what this was, but she's going to talk about the dynamics of the policy process.
So that's Dominic. Dominic is there.
Yes.
That's David Birch is right there. Okay.
Next is Paula Kahla, whom you know, our Faculty Senate President at University Park. Paula's going to look at mentor programs and the Puente Program. Some of you have visited with the Puente Program in the past to establish best practices for our Puente project here. Dory Scott, Librarian at SciFair, could not be with us tonight. She had a family conflict, and she's going to look at technologies to help both online students and students in the library. Jared Coates couldn't be with us tonight. His daughter got sick today. He's at Tom Ball. You may have met Jared before because he was a winner of the Chancellor's Faculty Technology Grant in the past, and he's looking at methods to increase recruitment and enrollment. Stephanie Friederis is an art professor at Tom Ball, and I really like this one. She's going to be looking into a photographic process called wet plate colloidal printing that was invoked during the U.S. Civil War, and look forward to seeing your work. Katie Herter teaches ESOL at North Harris, and she's going to create 16 sets of dictations for the oral communication strand and bring that back for us to use. Sharon Kennamore is a counselor...
Is Katie here? Is Katie?
No. Oh, no, she's not here.
Sharon Kennamore is a counselor at Kingwood, and she's going to do research into suicide Suzie Page, English at Kingwood, is going to work on materials to increase student success. And Vian Pearson, English Professor at Tom Ball, is going to create an open-access online rhetoric and composition course. Rebecca Royer, Faculty Senate President at SciFair, an ESOL professor, is creating a digital manual for use in the ESOL classes. And Melissa Studdard, Professor of English at Tom Ball, is going to work in flash fiction. I have no idea what flash fiction is, but I bet you it's terrific. And she's going to come back and teach that to our students, in addition to helping us community-wide with that. Oops. And Chancellor and Board, these are our 2018-19 Sabbatical recipients. And I bet you the Chair is going to ask...
At least one of them has to say something about the group, yeah. So...
How about talking about flash fiction?
Oh, yeah. You know, that's a good one. Yeah, I don't understand that either.
So, when I graduated, flash fiction didn't really exist yet, or at least it wasn't called that when I got my highest degree. It's a form of fiction that is shorter than the traditional short story, which is about 15 pages. It's about five pages long, or less. So, since I didn't have the opportunity to study it in graduate school, I'll be studying it now, and I'll be teaching it in both creative writing and composition. And one of the reasons I really wanted to study it is because when you write a story that's that short, there's the danger that the students will do a summary instead of a story. So I really want to learn all the technical aspects of it so that I can help them to create good stories.
Excellent. Well, again, on behalf of the Board, congratulations to all of you. We're proud of you, and we want you to come back, ready to go, and ready to maintain the momentum that you have created already. Thank you very much.
Sabbatical recipients have classes to get ready for and papers to grade.
I understand.
And so they're going to be heading out.
Yeah.
If any of the students who don't have a seat want to move into these empty seats up front, feel free.
Yeah.
There's some in the front row.
Students, come on up.
If you have more questions. All the way up there, yeah.
So the problem with sitting on the front row is we know when you're not paying attention, by the way. We're going to be watching you as much as you. Mario, if you would introduce Sandra, please.
For the students, my name is Mario Castillo, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel here at Lone Star College. And in that capacity, I oversee the Office of Governance, Audit, and Compliance. So that's a brand-new office that we've created in the last, let's see, it was created about November of 2016, so that gives you an idea of how new it is. And so the person sort of leading the charge on that is Associate Vice Chancellor Sandra Gregerson, and she's been in that position since this November. So she took it over about four months... Four months ago, and so she's here to tell you about exactly what it is that the Office of Governance, Audit, and Compliance does. So Sandra, if you'd like to come up here, here's Sandra, and she's going to take you through it. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Smith, Trustees, and Chancellor Head.
The microphone's a little off. You have to talk right into it.
Is that better?
Yes.
The mission of the Office of Governance, Audit, and Compliance is to support the college by promoting and strengthening compliance efforts in a transparent and equitable manner through our specified scope of work. One of the key resources that we've used to develop our compliance programs is the U.S. Federal Sentencing Guidelines for Organizations. I think I'm going... There you go. This guide provides eight essential elements, shown here, that we have incorporated in the design of our various programs.
Can you back up just for a second so that the Board can see exactly what that office does? Because we talk about... We talk about the office a lot, but this is generally what you review, correct?
Correct.
So when we get somebody... If we get anonymous complaints or... We want to make sure that the offices are doing what they're supposed to. We talked in the meeting, we've talked about reports that are due. We have a lot of state reports and federal reporting and grant reporting that's due. They make sure it's done on a timely fashion and the way it should be done.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. What you see here in our office is there are a number of departments and programs to support the institution's compliance goals. I think previous presentations have been made to the Board that focused on internal audit and one on incident management. This evening, what I've highlighted and read that I want to focus on is what Chancellor Head referenced somewhat, was our compliance item analysis, monitoring, and reporting piece, and how we built that out. So when we first looked at this, also can be called compliance item management, what we did was we looked at a proactive structure to create, and how are we going to do that? And we identified three objectives that we needed to achieve to do that. The first being increased awareness and knowledge about compliance and different compliance items. The second was to enhance communications and collaboration amongst different functional content areas that were in different divisions. And then the third was to establish processes to actually track, monitor, and report on the status and completion of those compliance items. So in order to achieve those first two objectives, the first thing that we did was we developed a compliance review committee. And this committee is college-wide, and it currently has 25 members that covers a variety of functional content areas from the college. This committee meets quarterly, face-to-face, and then once a month via WebEx. And the information that it covers and the topics would include the status of compliance items, strategies and resources to enhance our compliance efforts, prevention and intervention of identified areas of risk, and then emerging compliance news that comes from a variety of federal regulatory agencies, including those from the state. The last objective, in regards to actually tracking, documenting our compliance efforts and the completion of those, we knew we needed to develop a business process, specific procedures, and how we were going to track, monitor, and report the completion of those items. So the first part of that business process was somewhat of a daunting task because we had to develop a compliance item inventory of the institution's compliance items. And so that really is a living document because it's updated quarterly. Currently, that compliance item inventory document contains 147 items from federal, state, local, regulatory pieces, as well as policies. And then embedded within those are approximately 250 components that we track and monitor. Another piece of that business process was how do we notify? So we develop methods to send compliance item notifications to functional content reps and the executive owners, so it gives them an alert when one is due. Usually those occur at a 30-day and a 10-day prior to completion.
So Sandra, just for the Board's sake, when you say 147 federal, state, and local items with 250 components...
Yeah.
Those are different compliance reports that we're responsible for?
They could be. It's compliant item... Some of them have very specific reporting that's required at the state or federal level at different intervals. Sometimes it's we can develop those internal compliance deliverables and just document that we're doing, because they could be at any time from a program review or an audit that occurs, that they would want that type of evidence.
So the reason we have this office, by the way, is previously, and this is two years since you... Two years old? Year and a half?
It began to exist since November of 2016.
16. So before, pretty much each office was responsible, or each division was responsible for compliance reports. And we are so large right now, and you can see how many reports. The reason I want you to point that out or focus on that is we're very large. We need to make sure people are... Everybody's doing what they're supposed to because it impacts us institutionally if somebody's not doing that. So we need to make sure that that's happening. If we don't complete a financial aid report or a veterans report or OCR report or anything, then we have to deal with that at a very large level, so.
One thing that we began to identify, as Chancellor Head noted, is that when we looked at these compliance items, there were a lot of dependencies. So when they were being done in silos, maybe one content area was really needing that information to do their piece, and so they always didn't have the mechanisms to communicate that. So that's one of the things that we're facilitating through our compliance review committee. The reporting mechanism, what we also did was because we know different areas may need those deliverables, for example, RDA and grants may need some information or a report for that evidence. So we created a repository where, once a compliance item was completed, a rep from the area, as well as the executive owner, submits that with the deliverable. So if, excuse me, the COO or Chancellor Head needed that information, then I could go in and pull that and have that to them readily available. The other piece is that we do monthly and quarterly reporting, and those reports include the status of all those compliance items, if they're approaching, if they were completed, if the date was extended. So what you see here, this compliance... This is the February report. It's just a small portion. The first two pages, these are quite lengthy. The first two pages are more of an executive summary, and you'll see a chart that gives an overview. So in February, from January to February, 36 items were being tracked, monitored, and notifications sent. 25 of those were completed. Four were past due. They could have been extended. So seven had approaching deadlines. Four were noted as needing more information, and then 13 were carried over. So that's a sample of those reports. They come out every month. The quarterly ones also give notifications of what's coming up in that quarter. So these go to executive leadership. They will be getting the March one tomorrow. And I think that's probably enough for compliance.
Sandra, for the Board, Sandra does a great job. She's one of the best writers we have working at the college system, so when you read her reports, they're very straightforward, they're very... They're very businesslike, they're well-written. When I read them, I actually understand them, and they make sense, so...
Very good.
It's just very... It's just something that's really needed in our college, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity for me to share.
Good job.
Thanks.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Sandra.
That's all. That's it. Yep. At this point, we need to approve the minutes of our March 1st workshop and regular meeting, the trustees, and the March 23rd Board Retreat. And I'm going to take them separately, but do the March 1 meeting workshop and regular meeting first. Do we have a motion?
Sir Mayor?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the minutes of our March 1 meeting. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. Motion passed. Secondly, let's need a motion for the March 23, 2008 Board Retreat.
Sir Mayor?
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the minutes of our March 23, 2018 Board Retreat. Any questions? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. Motion passed. Dr. Nepolous. Oh. Yeah. Are you... Can you do announcements? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
So two quick announcements. One for the Board. We have the gala on... Or for everybody, really. The gala is next, not this Saturday, but Saturday week. You should have something in front of you.
Yeah.
The Board should have something in front of you about that. So if you've not let us... If you have not informed us what your intentions are, if you would, let Helen know, please. And so the other is in front of you. The... You have an article in front of you from the New York Times, the Education section, about middle... It's entitled "Middle Class Families Increasingly Look to Community Colleges." If you read through that article, at the very end, one of our students that transferred to Tulane is quoted about her and with her experiences at Lone Star. It's a good article, so...
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, anything else, Dr.? Okay, Dr. Nepolous.
Good evening, Chairman Ford... Chairman Smith.
Good evening.
Members of the Board and Dr. Head, and to the community college students here. I started a community college, so it's great to see you. And 22 years later, I'm doing the same thing you're doing, standing in front of some wonderful people, answering questions and doing some presentations, so congratulations on being up here. I had the privilege to represent the Presidents tonight, and I want to talk about something that we always talk about and give a little bit more content to the Advisory Council and committees. We are Lone Star College. We are a community college, so it's really important for us to serve our communities and partner with the businesses and industry leaders, the different organizations. So as we lead in education, teaching, and that is our business, and Dr. Head is very proud of that, and we truly believe in that, we incorporate and we integrate the feedback, the conversations and recommendations that they have. As you can see from this slide, this is our strategic priorities. You saw it when we talked about compliance, so these are the things that we are truly committed with. When you talk about our advisory committees, our workforce programs, it is truly an opportunity to integrate different parts of Lone Star College, from the Chancellor's Office to the COO, Mario Castillo, and specifically one of his Associate Vice Chancellors, Linda Head, working with corporate college and workforce education. So we want to make sure that we are doing what's right for our students, what's right for our community members and our business leaders. So if I were to pick, I would pick the academic and workforce program qualities. And as the result of the great communication, collaboration, and conversations, then we also benefit from the partnerships that enhance the student's success, and then some of the donations that you'll see in other slides, the financial responsibility and accountability with some of the equipment. So as you can see, there are three different levels. The program level, advisory committee level, which is expected by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, so that the programs are consistent, knowing that there is a need for the workforce program and what resources we need. So we're talking about books, we're talking about content, and that is the only thing required by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. Because we are Lone Star College, we do a lot more, and so we also have cluster-level advisory committees focusing on the different clusters, including health and health professions, business, energy, manufacturing. And then we have the Chancellor's level Advisory Council meetings. And so what we want to do throughout the organization, from the professors to the deans to the vice presidents to Associate Vice Chancellors, to have multi-level conversations. And at the highest level, the Chancellor's Advisory Councils, and we're talking about strategic planning, partnerships, donations, and basically here's how it goes. I'm the Chancellor, there are six college presidents, we're here to serve you. What do you need? Tell us what we're doing right, what we need to do to make sure we're doing better. So you hire our students because we're here for you. And as you can see on the top lip, we also expanded to include community organizations and faith-based organizations. The reason that they're on the corners, because when we talk to community members, we are Lone Star College, but we focus on the organizations and the groups that are closer to the community colleges and the neighborhoods that we serve, so we're very excited about that. So we're very excited about that. And from the advisory councils, we have the chief information officer, construction skills trades, and you can read the, the rest. But this is an opportunity to talk to CEOs, CIOs, and the people who make the decisions and have the ability to hire, the ability to, to donate, the ability to provide some meaningful and important conversations and feedback. So we are headed to the right direction, similar to what you do as a board, providing us direction, guidance, and support. And these are some of the advertisements that, uh, we invite. So we eat, we meet at least once a year, and it's an opportunity to have food and to share the information, and then to have some follow-up conversations. So what that looks like at the different colleges, so we talked about the three levels. And so sometimes we integrate some of the programs. And so for the six colleges, I'll talk about some of the advisory committees and then talk about how we have community organizations as well, uh, focused with nonprofits and faith-based organizations. So at Sci Fair, Lone Star College Sci Fair, they have the Student Success Institute. Thanks to the Student Success Initiative, they were able to, uh, with Dr. Quentin Wright, have a, a coordinator. And so they're having conversations with the people that work there, with the students, the community members, to make sure that we're talking about diversity. We're talking about what things we need to be successful. At Kingwood, they have the, uh, and, and some of you were there for the ribbon cutting, the advisory committee on the process technology program. And the interesting part is, you can see on the bottom, one of the, the chemical companies donated eighty-six thousand dollars. And even though we wanted to focus on one item per college, their dental hygiene program, uh, and their advisory committee is very instrumental throughout. And with Hurricane Harvey, it helped with the securing of, uh, some of the chairs that they needed to be replaced. And then for Lone Star College Montgomery, you have the live entertainment technology. And, and the great thing about this is a lot of smoke, a lot of music, a lot of lights. But our students are hired as interns, and they are guaranteed jobs. And so you're talking about real-life world experiences, learning in the classroom, and then getting a job. So that's, I think, wonderful. North Harris Education, uh, North Harris County Education Alliance is a, it's, it's more of a, a group that includes Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, some of the commissioners, and our superintendents for Spring ISD and Aldine ISD, wanting to talk about what do we need to do to better serve our students in the Aldine and Spring School districts. And we're very excited to have many programs. One of the programs that we've had was the Summer Bridge Program. And then Lone Star College Tomball, where they take a bunch of great selfies, uh, and, and work with a lot of, uh, community members. As you can see, the composition of their, their, uh, their group includes the city manager, CEOs, and community leaders. And then for Lone Star College University Park, this is a lot of community organizations and faith-based. Uh, you have Commissioner Kegel, who is part of that, as well as, uh, uh, one of the, one of the judges and other business leaders. And as you can see, they're working on their great science building and a donation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a geology rock. And so we talked about the six colleges. We do have a seventh college, uh, up and, up and running, uh, not officially, but you have to do some work behind the scenes and before it happens. And so proud to say that even Lone Star College Houston North has a, a group, had different of, uh, different committees, six committees. And so we're talking about anything from scheduling to workload to transportation. And in fact, Dr. Wright and I, uh, with, uh, Mr. Mario, Trustee Mario, met with Metro and talked about some of the concerns that, uh, the faculty had about bus transportation. And so there could be a resolution that doesn't involve a lot of money, but more moving something twenty, thirty yards down. And so we can get what the students want and need, and that's, uh, quality education and safety. Walking from the bus stop to Lone Star College, uh, Houston North eventually. And this sums up the advisory committees. This is, is given by the, the, uh, the chancellor through the publications. "Community Colleges Are Unique Because of Their Social, Cultural, and Economic Links in the Community." Lone Star College values these relationships and encourages area residents to advise and assist the college in program development, revision, and evaluation through formal groups known as advisory committees. Working closely with representatives of business, industry, and labor, LSE seeks input that will enable the college district to provide the highest-quality career programs for area residents." Thank you. Any questions?
What was your time limit there?
I had seven minutes. I gave myself eight minutes so I can, uh, recognize the students. So I will say seven minutes and thirty seconds, but I, 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 plus or minus a minute, and I think I'm good.
Well, we have our director of compliance here, so we can ask.
Yes, ma'am. You're on the spot lot like our student was.
All right, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I, um, I, I'm, uh, as you mentioned, you were gonna recognize students. And, uh, I was gonna speak, we have, uh, we have an audi- we have an audience here of, of students too. And, uh, just wanted to make sure that, uh, uh, we leverage their, their insight, their information. And when Sandra was here earlier, speaking, uh, she's somebody I follow on social media, and I share her stuff on, on Facebook. I mean, I don't get it on, on all kinds of social media, but at least he's an older guy. I use that. Uh, and I, and I just mention that because sometimes they don't know that how much they can help us, you know, get the word out, spread it out. And, and so there's one way you can participate, you know, help us all, all people, get, get out. And, uh, just because of the, 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 the way you're very comfortable with social media. And, and it helps us because it don't, all we have to do is, you know, pass it on or send it to the school district or whatever. You know, just, just wanted to mention that.
Include it in there.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nepolus. Good job.
Thank you.
I do think all the college presidents, by the way, do a really good job. I know he, he covered some of the advisory groups, but all the colleges have different advisory groups, and we have different community groups. But the college presidents are responsible for that. So I think you hit on the high ones, but there's some other advisory groups in there that you don't, you didn't have enough time to talk about all that. But, uh, but there's a lot more than that, so.
Jennifer, you're, you're representing the vice chancellor, right? Come on up.
If I could give you a little background on this, the, about last, sometime last week, I received a, uh, draft report, maybe about ten days ago, I received a draft report. And I sent you a, I sent the board a note with some, I sent the entire report this afternoon. And that's my fault for sending it out late. I thought that it had gone out earlier than that. It was in my outbox. And so you'll have the entire report in your email, I believe. I think it came from Helen. So a couple of years ago, the coordinating board sent out a draft report, and we never saw the final report. But what they do is take, uh, they have their own metrics for evaluating the financial strength of college systems across the state. And we rely, though, on Standard and Poor's guidelines. And we've asked, uh, there were, you can read the email that I sent, but they had some questions about Lone Star's status. Now, they did this three years ago, and we objected to some of it, and we never heard back from them again. And that, when the report came out the last time, there were questions raised about our transparency and, which was pretty interesting, because we never saw the report. I never saw the final report. I never saw the draft. It was actually sent to me. And it came out the same day, or the same, about the same, it was the same week, like a day apart, where we were given our triple-A rating by Standard and Poor's. So Standard and Poor's is our, uh, that's our standard that we use. And I asked Jennifer, we, uh, we saw the draft, except about ten days ago. We disagree with it. We disagree with the way they're, the way they go about their system. It's, uh, Jennifer's going to address some of those issues. And, and basically, we're in great shape. We're triple-A rated. We're gonna stay triple-A rated. So I've asked Jennifer, and we also asked Clarence Greer, our financial advisor from, uh, Royal Bank of Canada, to come in and make sure. We want to be very open and transparent about this, in case you see a report about this, because we just disagree for a number of reasons. And I will say, you're gonna mention that that's being reviewed? I, I will. If you don't, go ahead. I'll keep going.
Which, right, that the metrics are being reviewed?
Go ahead.
Right. Um, yes, I mean, what we've heard is that there's a committee forming, hopefully to review and update these metrics.
Well, what's happening is we, this is an old, their interpretation of your financial wellness is at least ten years old, at least ten years old. It was put together by the coordinating board. It does not reflect current, um, I don't want to cut into your presentation, but it doesn't, we don't think it is current in their evaluation, and some, some of the laws have changed since they put it together. We are in excellent shape, and we have been. We, so I'll let you two talk about that, then we'll come back. If you miss anything on the financials that I think is worth repeating to the board. I sent you a note, though, with a couple of high notes in there. I sent you a report, uh, an email with a couple of highlights in there, so. Go ahead.
Okay. So, and I'm actually probably not gonna go through each individual ratio, although I do have that in here. That can be something where, uh, if you would like me to go through them individually, uh, separately, I can do that. Uh, but to give the highlight, I mean, first, this is the overview that you essentially just heard. The objective of this report is an assessment of overall financial health. Um, but a lot of the metrics, I guess I'll go to this next one, um, are not necessarily metrics even I personally would have selected. And the standards themselves, I think for me, that's one of the key things, is it has been a little bit unclear to me as to how these standards, and particularly for the primary and viability ratios, um, were even selected, and they have never been updated. Uh, so here are the ratios. They use return on net position, which that metric, we have passed their standard, which is positive, which is obviously very good that we're positive there. Operating margin, we did not meet that standard, which is to be positive there. We are negative. And like I said, once I have the individual slides to discuss there. The primary reserve ratio basically measures how long we could continue to operate if we were no longer receiving student tuition and fees. Um, there, again, a, a standard of point one-four. I'm not sure where that standard was developed. The viability ratio, that one basically measures how much of our debt could we pay off today if we used all of our existing resources to just pay it off? Uh, there, the standard is point four-two.
Let me just point out, so if you're a college that's growing, and we were one of the ones that's growing, and we had a bond, and there were several colleges identified in that report that were growing, then your number is not going to look good. And it's, um, and again, it's the same kind of reporting, that if you bought a house in your first or second year of paying off the house, or third or fourth, yes, you're gonna have a disproportionate. If you take a look at your, your net standing, yes, it doesn't look so good. But over the long term, but that's what all, any college in a growing mode like us is going to have that, have that issue.
Jennifer, if you don't mind, I went to law school so I wouldn't have to take any more than the one math class that I took in college. Could I have the, you know, ten words or less explanation of what each of these things is?
It's on the next couple of slides.
Oh, is it? Okay. All right. Thank you.
I don't know that it's ten words or less, though.
For what it's worth, I agree with you. I've looked at the report. The report must be twenty-five or thirty pages long. It is the most convoluted report that you could possibly read. It's convoluted in that a normal person.
Yeah. I guess, uh, my, um, ten words or less. I'm actually not gonna commit to ten words.
No, I'm not gonna hold you to ten words, but I don't want to spend a lot of time on definitions, just.
Sure. What of my fundamental issues, even not even getting into the individual ratios, is in this report, it is listing us as missing most, the majority of the metrics that they've established. However, if you then look at the report from S and P, they're rating us triple-A, which is one of their highest ratings. So to me, what just seems a little baffling is how you can have two things on such opposite ends of the spectrum. They're not even in the same ballpark. That's, to me, the bottom line of what's a little bit baffling about these metrics. Um, so it's a matter of, do you want to take this report from, uh, metrics developed by this coordinating board as compared to S and P Rating Agency? And, I mean, here, um, definitely, you know, we don't need to get into all this, but this was just sort of my counterpoint of what S and P Rating Report says about Lone Star Colleges' financial health. And some of that quote is just strong financial performance, um, uh, in their, in their estimation, strong unrestricted net assets. So that's, to me, what is, it needs to be worked on as the state, the coordinating board, and looking at these metrics to understand better, why does it seem so inconsistent? Because a lot of the other community colleges, who also have missed several of the standards, equally have strong credit ratings.
Can you back up, though, and show her one of those slides where you were, can you back up? Do you have all those slides in there, the five or six? Keep going. Yeah, for example, operating, uh, explain that one and how the depreciation, which would not be a factor in the way we would be looking at our, it's not the way we take a look at, look, I mean, explain the operating margin to have been negative since two thousand fifteen, and why that appears that way.
So here, they are pulling the debt. They use the same data that S and P looks at, which is our annual financial report. They are pulling this from our net income statement, which is on an accrual basis, not a cash basis. So, uh, what we looked at is what happens if we back out depreciation expense, which is not a cash expense. It does take the total value of our assets and says that those assets degrade in value each year, and we expense that equivalent amount, um, each year. So including that depreciation expense, yes, we're negative. But that's not, we're not negative on a balanced budget cash basis. So when you backed, when we backed out the depreciation expense, the operating margin was three point two-six percent positive. So.
Well, it, it appears, when you take a look at the report, the way they have written and presented it, that there are some issues here, which we just disagreed with, because, uh, we have a positive cash flow. We have, we're headed towards sixteen percent in the reserve. We are bringing in more money than we're actually spending, so. Uh, and we wanted Clarence to come in and talk about his view. We just wanted you to hear from a third party, but we want to be very open and transparent about this. If you see this report, and I'm still not sure if this report we'll ever see, because the other one didn't, but.
I just want to ask. Coordinating board appointed by the governor, but they have no authority over what we're doing here. They don't establish any accounting standards recognized by anybody, including us. And their report conflicts with somebody who actually matters, S and P. Do I have that right?
Yes. I'll help you proportionate. That is, that is our issue. That's fine. And, and, and another committee, I'm not the only chancellor or president that's not happy about this. And without them consulting with us, they put together this review ten years ago. It's outdated. It's antiquated. And there's another committee that's being reviewed. We're trying to get on this, uh, involved in this, so that we can have a, a modern, take a look. And some of the colleges, and like Austin, for example, who's in great shape. Uh, San Jacinto wants to be a part of that. We want to be a part of that. So if the coordinating board wants to examine that, then that's fine. That's coming from the legislature to review this. But you're right. That's not a reflection to us over the way we look at our operations, which is the way we present it to you, and that's the way we present it to ourselves, so.
And if I could say, even for example, in terms of not updating the standards, in two thousand fifteen, we had to implement what's called GASB sixty-eight, which means that on our books, we had to begin recognizing our proportionate share of the pension liability from the state. That was a big change in our financials that did impact the ratios significantly. You can see the difference from fourteen to fifteen, but they didn't change the standards.
Talk about that just for a minute. So statewide, the TRS program is not fully funded, correct?
Correct.
And so there's a fifty, how much, what's the shortfall?
Uh, well, the portion that we recognize is fifty-something million. I don't remember the exact number.
The part for us.
Our proportionate share.
We have contributed everything that we should have contributed in our retirement to the state. They have a shortfall. It has not been fully funded across the state. And if you read anything about the budget, you know it's been not fully funded. Our, the interest rates, when the interest rates fell off a little bit, then they fell behind. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, because she's updated me over this. So, because I'm asking, so how would we be responsible for a general state retirement fund? When we've contributed, we've done everything that we're supposed to do. We contribute our share. And what they've done, and their rule was, they, on that debt, they carve that out to everybody. So everybody assumed if, what, how, how would we be responsible for that if they can't make the payments?
Well, it's not just they. This was a nationwide change in accounting standards that. This was a nationwide change in accounting standards that participatory pension plans, that each participant had to recognize on their books, their proportionate share of the liability. Because it could potentially mean, say, in the future theoretically, our payments might need to increase to cover a deficit at the overall level.
If you don't, if you're not aware of this, it looks like we somehow, we were not, we didn't take care of our business, which we have. So we're not, it's not that we had a shortfall ourselves of fifty-two million. The way the books read though, and the way they're counting against us, is our liability in this. Is that accurate? The way they're doing their calculations?
Yeah, it is added to our liabilities, which then impacted these ratios, and really they should have re-looked at the, not necessarily even the metrics themselves, but at least the standards, because they, I'm assuming, set the standards at a point in time prior to this accounting rule change.
So we understand all that. If that's the way they want to do things, that's fine, but that's not a reflection of our financial situation, which is why I wanted...
Yeah, I'm kind of like Linda. I had two classes in accounting, basic accounting as a freshman. And to me, what the accounting board is saying, if the state cannot pay their portion of the shortfall on the pension side, then Lone Star is liable for that particular share, rather than the state...
Well, and I didn't even necessarily mean to get into a deeper discussion of that pension liability. I meant it as an example of this coordinating board report on these financial metrics not updating the standards even over time as the accounting rules change. Even though, even S and P recognizes that, because if you read the S and P report, they talk about, for example, adjusted unrestricted net assets. That adjusted ratio, they are backing out the pension liability because they want to be able to compare a consistent measurement across time that doesn't have this dramatic change from one year to the next that didn't reflect any actual change other than a change in how we were doing a reporting. That was my point with that was in, towards the comment of having these standards not really have been reviewed for, I think, about ten years. And if Clarence could maybe just talk about the S and P rating.
Right.
We want, we wanted Clarence to come in so you could hear another party, and Clarence is honest and straightforward and can answer any questions. I, I will just tell you that, once you take a look at the report, we'd be glad to meet with you individually, as a group, we'll come back in and tell you what's going on. We'll keep you informed over what that committee is doing, but Clarence is the person that we listen to for, for our financial advice.
And again, this is something that you've seen before in terms of your rating being triple-A. I want to know that you're rated by Standard and Poor's, the majority of bonds, over almost a billion dollars, three-quarters of a billion dollars rated by Standard and Poor's, where travelers and pension funds or different investors are making decisions based upon what Standard and Poor's have you rated. The biggest, the biggest difference in terms of the report that Jennifer just got finished explaining to you and how S and P views you, is the standard. Sounds like in the former, the higher coordinating board, the standard is arbitrary, something that they develop in-house, where with S and P, the standard is based upon your peers across the country and also in the state. And so it's based upon real data, comparing apples, then apples together and figuring out, how do you compare? And then also the assessing management, where management is not part of this discussion here, is a big part of the discussion with Standard and Poor's. In fact, you have the privilege and, and you're fortunate to have this, a strong management assessment. Very few people actually reach the strong, that's the highest rub of the financial management assessment that Standard and Poor's, you know, gives as an issuer. And that's because you pretty much institutionalize your policies and procedures. So irrespective of who's sitting in the board chair, who's sitting in the chancellor's chair, it will, it will go a certain way in terms of best practices. And that's why they have so, such high marks. Also to note that Standard and Poor's, you have a higher rating than the sovereign debt of the United States of America. So Standard and Poor's was the one, to kind of put that in perspective. And, you know, but I think the strings are self-evident here on the left. Strong economy, very strong financial positions. They talk about the strong management, the flexibility that you have. And then looking at the outlook, you know, there are three types of outlooks you could have. You could have a stable outlook, a positive outlook, and a negative outlook. But when you're triple-A, there's, there's no positive, so the outlook being stable is extremely good. That's the best outcome you could have. And you can say that, you can see that they're not anticipating lowering any rating for the next two years. Outlook is just consistent, is the outlook for two years. And so when we met with Standard and Poor's in Dallas and had a good discussion, they walked away with the impression that you had great management, you had strong budgetary flexibility. They, they looked across the state and said, you know, we liked a lot of the things that you're doing. It's consistent, you've held this rating now for over ten years, and you just continue flying ahead. So I think that's their assessment.
Any questions?
You mentioned, what, what is the national...
Double A plus. One notch below you. Double A plus.
They have double A plus?
Double A plus.
Double A plus?
Double A plus is what Standard and Poor's, U.S. Treasury bonds are, were downgraded back in 2011 to double A plus.
So that means we're safer than the government bond?
In, in fact, it's in the rating report, you know, that they say they believe that your systems are more consistent.
That's only because they have an army in May.
Well, that's, that's true. I'm just telling you what it means.
Well, again, if the board has any, I, I just wanted to bring this to your attention before you read something, that we think, we just, she can probably tell, I just, I strongly disagree with their, so, I am not the only one. I was on the phone this week, and actually there's a meeting next week with the executive committee of the Texas Association of Community Colleges, and I'm on the executive committee. I didn't put it on the agenda, another college president did, another chancellor did. And because there's a couple of us that show up on that list, is, it looks like there's an issue when there's just, under any, under the normal criteria that we use, there's certainly not an issue. As a matter of fact, it's just the opposite for us, so. God, thank you.
Jennifer, pretend there's nobody in the room, especially the media. Do you think this is an effort by the coordinating board to make themselves feel important and therefore have to criticize? Because if they criticize, that means they are smarter than you are. I mean, if you're finding this happening so many places, I wonder if they have an ego problem there. I don't know, but you can answer that. Just pretend there's nobody else in the room.
I, I think I don't know what the situation was approximately ten years ago when these metrics were developed. Perhaps these made sense at the time. I think now they don't make sense any longer and should be revisited.
That's a great answer. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Clarence.
Anthony, come on up.
Okay. Everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Chair Smith, Chancellor Head, members of the board, good evening. So this is my final board presentation, and that is because my term as faculty senate president is up as of June first. At that point, I plan on returning to living the simple life of a teacher. But this being my last presentation, it seemed all the more pressing to me to come up with something solid to go out on, as it were. And I find that we talk more effectively about the things that we're passionate about. And so on this, my final board presentation, I would like to talk about and express some opinions about three things that are near and dear to my heart. The AA degree, the importance of a liberal education, and this one may surprise you, taxes. So here are some numbers for the spring of 2018, the current semester we are in. So as you can see, we have sixty-four thousand one hundred and fourteen students enrolled in our academic track and nine thousand one hundred and twenty-three students enrolled in our workforce track. That is the, those are the unduplicated headcount numbers. I included that at the bottom of the screen. So academic, as you know, means that the student is enrolled in an associate's degree program, likely with the intention of transferring to a four-year college or university. Workforce means that the student is enrolled in a certificate program, likely means that the student intends to enter the workforce right after completing the program. As you can see, the majority of our students are enrolled in associate degree programs. And the most common degree that we offer is the associate of arts degree. So these are the degrees that we awarded in the last academic year. Now I think the way that we conceptualize our students by distinguishing between academic and workforce in this way runs the risk of being a little bit misleading. After all, our workforce programs are held to the same very high academic standards that our, any course in our academic program is held to. And on the academic side, I would submit to you that academic transfer is, in a sense, workforce. Just consider how many jobs require a four-year degree these days. So by promoting our academic side, I think we are promoting workforce. Now, some of what, some of what drives this conceptualization, I think, has to do with preconceptions that folks tend to have about associate's degrees, particularly the associate of arts degree, our most popular degree. When it comes to degrees and subjects like history, philosophy, political science, or English, for example, we're too quick to narrowly ask, well, what can you do with that? Now, this may surprise you, but students who major in disciplines like these tend to do quite well financially. Some data on this appeared in a recent Wall Street Journal article. What you see on the slide here is, is from that article. It appeared in sometime in the fall of 2016. So according to PayScale, Inc., a Seattle-based provider of salary data, here's what we learned. The typical English or sociology graduate with, say, zero to five years experience, so at the beginning of one's career, earns an average of just thirty-nine thousand dollars a year. Now, by contrast, majors like science, or finance, sorry, nursing, computer science, earn a lot more, fifty-two thousand, fifty-seven thousand, sixty-three thousand, respectively. However, this story tends to change as careers lay out. Once people reach their peak earnings ages of fifty-six to sixty, liberal arts majors earn on average sixty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars per year, the association found. That's about three percent ahead of the earnings pace of people with degrees in vocational fields such as nursing and accounting, which is implied by the numbers on the chart. And employers too, these days, are recognizing the value of liberal arts degrees and the sort, and the so-called soft skills that they promote. So here's a great quote from Tom Gillis, who's the CEO of Bracket Computing, it's a tech startup. "In the coming decades, success will be defined by the ability to understand the complex problems that customers face. The next billion-dollar company will be run by history majors who are skilled in wading through a massive jumble of facts and who have the ability to distill these facts down to a clear set of objectives that a global team can fulfill." As you know, I'm a philosophy professor. Very often I get asked, Anthony, how did you get into philosophy? To which I respond, well, I'm no dispassionate seeker of truth. I did it for the money. But to me, the value of the associate of arts degree and of the liberal arts, of the liberal education, of course goes beyond money. In my view, at least one distinctive function of the liberal arts is to put us in a frame of mind where our capacity for empathy is heightened. Whether it's learning about the principle of equality in a philosophy class like mine, or learning about socioeconomic barriers to success in a sociology class, or having to grapple with the perspective of someone who isn't like you by reading a novel in a literature class, or in a theater class, where as an actor, you have to directly take up the perspective of someone who isn't like you. The liberal arts are at their best when they engage our capacity for empathy. And right now, I would say that empathy is something we really need, not as a college or as a community so much, but as a country. I would say that we need it regardless of our particulars and certainly regardless of our politics. And I want to mention briefly one truly awesome thing that we have going at the college right now that I think distinctly promotes this. The Lone Star College Center for Civic Engagement, which operates at each of our colleges, has a regular event called the Deliberative Dialogue. They take a pressing cultural or political issue, like some past ones have been immigration, the minimum wage, healthcare costs. They have trained moderators lead discussions with students and community members, and the goals of these dialogues is to, is for people of different views and experiences to seek a shared understanding of a problem and to search for common ground for action. The discussions are meant to get the participants to focus on the facts at hand, to keep their biases at bay as much as possible, and to recognize our shared humanity. I think it's amazing that our students get to do things like this at our college, which brings me to my last topic, taxes. So I'm going to express an opinion that I imagine is not a very common or popular one in the state of Texas. I'm from New York, by the way. I love taxes. I think they're great. I think this because without taxes, there would be no community college. In my view, the greatest achievement in education in the twentieth century happened in nineteen forty-four, the G.I. Bill. I say that because the G.I. Bill essentially democratized a liberal education. No longer was it just for the elite, for the super wealthy. Millions of men and women went to war. They defeated the Nazis, they came home, and the federal government paid for them to go to college and read Plato and Aristotle. And they did, and they were better for it, and the country was better for it, and education was better for it. And we at Lone Star, at community colleges, we continue this noble pursuit of democratizing a liberal education by making it available to anyone who wants to come through our doors, particularly to low-income students who could not afford an education otherwise. But the only way that that's possible is with taxes. Here you can see the breakdown of our budget, the portion of it borne by taxes, the portion of it borne by students. I want to comment just briefly on that state funding percentage. That has been continually shrinking since the early nineteen eighties. Back then, it was in the seventy-something percent, now it's twenty-one percent. We continue, we expect that to continue to shrink. Now, since I have been faculty senate president, I have seen the board express some reservations about having to raise the cost of tuition and fees, which I think is good. I think we should have reservations about raising the cost of tuition and fees for our students. But if we're going to have reservations about raising the cost of tuition and fees, then I think we also ought to be open to the possibility of raising taxes as well. I want to strongly encourage the board to take this seriously. I say this boldly, knowing that as of June first, you may happily take up this matter with my successor. Finally, I'd like to send a heartfelt and sincere thank you to the board and to Chancellor Head. This has been a tremendous learning experience and growth experience for me that is difficult for me to, to put into words, the value that I've gotten out of this. But I want to thank the board and the chancellor for giving the faculty, in the form of us, the faculty senate presidents, not just a voice, but a strong voice in the administration and in these meetings. It has been an honor and a privilege to be able to speak to you in this capacity, and I wish you well. Thank you.
I just want to... It did not escape my notice that the loss continuing decrease in state funding for higher education coincides with an increasing need for more empathy within our society. And I couldn't agree with you more. We get what we're willing to pay for.
Thank you.
And Anthony, I would like to say our thank you for your service, and I know the job as faculty senate representative is probably a pretty tough one, but thank you for bearing through all of that and et cetera. you for bearing through all of that and et cetera. And you are the, among the few people that like taxes. I like taxes for the same reason that you do, because I know what it has done for people, especially disadvantaged individuals. So, I encourage you to continue to come back. I encourage you to continue maintaining the enthusiasm you have about education in all of the different areas that a student can pursue. And again, finally, thanks for your job. Well done.
My, my pleasure and thank you, Chair Smith.
I have a question. So, we see the proportion breakdown of where we derive our revenues, right? We have three primary sources. Um, one, two of those of which we control. What is, this is a question we're grappling with, the proper proportion of which we should derive that revenue, or at least, what's the method by which we should pursue an inquiry as to what that proper proportion ought to be?
You're asking me?
You're the one who said we needed it. You can't just be a philosopher. You gotta have some answers.
This is... This is called practical philosophy?
At least a method, because this is something we're struggling with, with finding, is because we want to set up a system in which, because I've been pretty vocal about where I stand on student fees and tuition, and, and the constant rise and seeing them go is something that I don't, you know, I, I tend to, um, disagree with. So, what I would like to see is a, a, a scale, or at least a formula in place, so that we say, listen, if our revenue goes up, we're going to automatically attribute this percentage of our revenue to these three groups.
Right.
How should we say, a community ought to be responsible for fifty percent, and students twenty-five, or is it thirty-three and thirty-three? I mean, how do we even go about answering that?
Well, what do you think of the option of making them the same?
Yeah, so we could do it thirty-three, thirty-three, allow the other components to make that up, and as those other components shrink, do we then distribute that one percent equally to both pie, sides of the pie? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure either, but I will say that I think that when, when we see that we have to, um, uh, when we see that we have to increase our costs, and we don't want to, and we're nervous about raising the cost of tuition, um, the possibility of raising taxes has to at least be on the table. But I, but, but, uh, thank you. I'll, uh, I will, I will think more about the principles that should guide, that should guide those kinds of decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.